... meeting if you'll all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in a true republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Crowner.
Here.
Raleigh. Stewart. Here. Please.
Here.
Wes.
Here.
Great. Can I have a motion to perfect and approve the agenda?
Removed.
Support.
Motion with support. Roll call.
Stewart. Aye. Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Have a motion with support for the consent agenda, which is listed items one through eleven. Approved minutes of the regular city council meeting on April seventeenth, two thousand thirteen. Approved Chief Heim's attendance at the International Fire Chiefs Conference. Approved payment to Mississippi Valley Pump. Approved payment to the National Fire Codes. Approved payment to Quad City Analytical Services. Approved payment to Gray, Goddard, Miller, and Taylor. Approved payment to Great River Medical Center. Approved payment to Norm's Kessler Electric. Approved payment to Brockway Company. Approved the Clerk's monthly financial report for March. Approved the claims list as presented. Let me click that. Oh, I'm gonna have to take that bigger. Which out of that total of one hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred seventy dollars and eighty-one cents, forty thousand, seventy-two dollars and sixty-one cents out of the general fund, road use was three thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. LMI set aside was nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The Public Works Building was forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. The water account was eight thousand, seven hundred, seventy dollars and ninety-one cents. Sewer was twelve thousand, nine hundred, forty-five dollars and seventy cents. Risk management self-insurance was four thousand, ninety-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Flex account was a hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Trust and agency water deposit, seventy-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. And the Fourth of July celebration, what's around the corner, was twenty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents, which makes the ran total again for one hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred, seventy dollars and eighty-one cents. Can I have a roll call?
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart. Aye.
Motion passed. I say I have a proclamation to read for Youth Appreciation Week, which is May sixth through the twelfth. It says, "Whereas the vast majority of the youth are concerned knowledgeable and responsible citizens, and whereas the accomplishments and achievements of these young citizens deserve recognition and praise of their elders, and whereas the Optimist International has since nineteen fifty-four developed and promoted a program entitled Youth Appreciation Week, and whereas the citizens of West Burlington, Iowa have indicated a desire to join with the Optimists in expressing appreciation and approval of the contributions of the youth, therefore, I, Teresa Lee, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of West Burlington, do hereby proclaim, May sixth through the twelfth, as Youth Appreciation Week in the City of West Burlington, and by this action let it be known that we have faith in the ability of today's youth as they assume responsible roles in the future of mankind." Dated the third of April, two thousand and thirteen. Alrighty. Let's move on to committee reports, and we'll start with finance. Rod.
Couple things. Number one, I guess, just briefly on the Fourth of July, we are moving ahead quite rapidly, getting that done, and I guess for those that might want to sell raffle tickets, I do want to mention that we do have those available now. We did get those in this week. If your group, club, or organization, or somebody you know wants to sell those raffle tickets as a fundraiser, you sell them for two dollars apiece. At the end of the thing, we'll write you a check back for a dollar for each one you sell. So it's a pretty good fundraiser. I don't remember the total last year, but we had about thirteen, fourteen different people, and gave back a lot of money to different clubs, groups, and organizations. So it's a wonderful fundraiser for your clubs or organizations, so I guess I'd just remind you about that. And then one future thing, I seen Mr. Gifford, that you mentioned in your note to us, who's gonna be working on salary resolution for you and staff. And I wondered if you were, had any thoughts on that yet, as far as, as you know, we did the Union Three, Three, and Zero. Typically, we do you guys roughly the same, but I wondered if you had thoughts on that that we could talk about now, or whether you're prepared to do that or not.
That was gonna be my recommendation, is Three, Three for everybody. That's typically what we do.
As opposed to the Two, Two, Two that we budgeted for?
Yes.
Okay.
It really hasn't, it doesn't matter how we do that, we could do it, we could do it that way, too. It comes out in the end the same way.
Well, it comes out-
Yeah, we have percent unbudgeted of-
It comes out a little bit different. I mean, we'd be, we'd be taking an extra percent total out of, out of our budget that we didn't plan for, another percent for all you people, and it had pretty good rates of pay in some cases. Doing a quick calculation, you'd think that would come out in the long run the same. Actually, the Two, Two, Two gets you actually a little more money than the Three, Three, Zero does, if you multiply that out. Now, that doesn't make any sense, but it looked like, it's minus, I mean, it's minor. It's-
Oh, 'cause we've tried it before, too.
Yeah, it's not very much, but-
We've, we've done that during Union negotiations to try to figure that out, and it normally comes out really, really close to being the same.
Yeah, it's real close to the same. But I just wondered kinda what you was thinking, since you had mentioned it, and budget-wise, I just wondered.
That's where I was leaning to going, and I hadn't completely figured that out yet, 'cause we haven't got there, and I haven't got all the evaluations done. I'll be doing those in the next couple of weeks, so.
Okay. All right, thanks, that's all I got.
Anybody else have anything for finance?
Just a couple things. Still waiting for the alleys to firm up a little bit, and we're gonna get those patched. I've been talking to our contractor that does the seal coat work. We're gonna try to get that done before July first. When I have a list of alleys, I'll bring those to you, so you can approve where we're gonna do that work. The Akos is supposed to be here tomorrow to get the pool de-winterized, so that when it's time to fill the pool, we'll be ready to go on that. And we had the stage opened up last week, and it's starting to, it'll actually be leaving tomorrow night to go out for its first event, so I expect another busy season with our stage going around to various places.
I see briefly, Randy, that, as I was coming home from work, that, that arrow that we talked about, it was there for about thirty seconds.
We're gonna, I was gonna talk to Dick about that. We, between the two of us, we decided we didn't want it to last too long, because that's twenty-four, seven that it's gonna do that. And later in the day, when there's not a lot of traffic, people will be frustrated if that arrow's on for any length of time, and nobody's sitting there. But I'm gonna talk to him and see if we can increase that just a little bit. But it has helped speed things up over there.
Yes, and you said that hopefully by the end of May, we'll get our cameras-
That's what the contractor told me. He hopes to be in here by the end of this month.
Perfect. It's worth waiting for. Lovely. Does anybody else have anything for streets? Public safety? I don't have anything.
I've got a few things. During the past week, we've held a couple of bicycle safety courses for the children, one at the grade school, and one for the Boy Scouts over at the Christian School. Thanks Sergeant Ryan, Officer Covert heading up those two programs. Officer Covert is attending Neighborhood Watch Training Sample in Hampshire, Illinois, today and tomorrow. This probably will prepare her, we should prepare him for the citywide Neighborhood Watch Training Session at West Burlington City Hall on Tuesday, May fourteenth, at six P.M. Alice Instructor Sergeant Ryan will be leaving on the third of May to view Davenport School Systems implement a program in their schools for the Alice. Instructors both from Burlington P.D. and Des Moines County Sheriff's Office will also go up with him and view that training, so we're excited to see how they end up doing it up there. We're at the Police Department now, working on our policy manual. A lot of those policies were written back in nineteen ninety-five, so we're just now adding some of the stuff to catch up. We did a ride-along program policy that we're worked on. Use of high-visibility vests in traffic situation, GPS, and vehicle squad cars policy, so the guys pretty much know straight up what's expected. And then the last is the Southeast Hour Regionally Testing for Law Enforcement Offices. It will be taking place at Southeastern Community College on Saturday, May eleventh, two thousand and thirteen. Major Grimshaw of Burlington P.D. that's heading this up says we have sixty-eight applicants for testing. West Burlington will be hiring one full-time officer from this list of eligible applicants. Several of our officers have volunteered their time to score the applicants in the testing, and I'd just like to thank them for participating in the hiring process of our new officer. That's all I have.
So you, just right quick, so you, you're pretty sure at this point in time that you're gonna hire that new person and not some existing officer that's out somewhere today?
There, even if there is certified officers, they will need to-
Go through this training?
-testing, too. Yes. No, I'm looking at that, but we've set some guidelines that we want everybody to go through before they're considered for hiring. We sat down, as a P.D. as a whole, and went through these guidelines that we would like to see, because once you have somebody hired, he's gonna become part of a team.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's very important to make sure that we do everything possible to make the right choice for this position, for the mentality of the town, and the disposition and personality of the department. Very important that everybody's included in that. I think we have a great department now. Personality-wise, I think it fits good with the community, and I'd like to keep that up and make sure the choice is correctly made.
Sounds good.
And I really wanna say, I've noticed there's been a lot more training opportunities for the officers lately, and I think that's a great thing.
Yes, I pretty much have put it down. I'm coming up on my last few years of retirement, and I don't need as much as-
Really?
-the rest of them, so I've been kinda dishing it out to them. There's a lot of things that I wanted them to experience that I was able to experience in my career. I want them to leave, I wanna leave the best apartment I can have, and the only way to do that is keep them up training.
That's great.
Let me know when we are leaving, Frank.
I will do that. It won't be for a couple more years.
I think you have to have council approval, so that might be hard.
You may want to in a couple of years.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, Mike?
On buildings, Dearie Brothers, interior works continuing, the sheet rock's done. They've primed the first coat onto the sheet rock, they're putting the ceiling tile in. Sprinkler systems are coming down through the sheet, the sheet rock and the ceiling tile. They'll be putting the finish coat on the sheet rock here pretty quick. They're gonna get the floor down. It's moving right along. They're looking at late April, first part of June for completion. Ortho rehab, exterior walls continue. The new entryways, steel frame and work is going up. The interior work is continuing. They've gotten rid of a lot of electricians now, so that's moving forward. They're in the process of trying to get some sheet rock in in those two areas. The outside's been all buttoned up between the windows and the brickwork. The outside's getting close to being done. Building permits are up to thirty now from twenty-four, week and a half ago. We're still getting a onslaught of city ordinance violations. We did have one in court this week, and it was settled in front of the judge. And rental inspections are continuing. On the fire side, the fire prevention yearly self-inspection reports have been mailed out to all the businesses in the city, and we've got about twenty-five percent of them already backed. I'm working with the new grant writers for the AFG two thousand and thirteen grant, and gathering information that they need to start helping us write that. We're still waiting for the two thousand and twelve to run out. We're still, we're still in the running for the SCBA's and some extrication equipment. The two thousand and twelve SAFER grant, I did do the paperwork and sent everything up to FEMA in Washington and the EPA, and in three days, they did approve the HVA system for the station, so that's a huge savings for the taxpayers. We're in the final step of now taking bids. Once all the bids, we get all the bids, and we make sure all the As are dotted, and you know, everything's the same all the way across. We have to submit them back to FEMA for their approval, and then it comes to the council for their approval. And then tomorrow is the radio evaluations for all of our radios. Vertex will be here. We talked to them, we did a day trip up to FDIC, and we made contact with them, and they've got a few more executives coming with us, with them down here tomorrow, and we're gonna run them through the paces and send them home, and hopefully they'll decide how to fix it.
So, off the top of your head, how much was that HVA grant? How much is that?
Ten grand.
Ten?
I budgeted a couple of years ago, six, and they laughed at me. I didn't have enough. So we figured, when we, when I put it together, we figured ten grand should get us everything hooked up, and a new thermostat outside unit, and a one-ton heavier unit. We're going to a four-ton unit instead of a three-ton, 'cause there's times that we get in there, and you get thirty people in that room, and it will not cool down. So I'm upping it to four-ton. And the SEER rating's gotta be around ninety-seven for FEMA to approve it. And one of the big things that FEMA and EPA worked with us on was, it still has the old Freon in it. From the nineteen seventies, and that was the first thing that ding it this way. They told us to get it out of there.
The ozone-depleting Freon.
Yep. So, we're moving forward.
Anybody have questions for Mike or Frank?
Mike, we've talked recently, and I think you reported about some interest in building other apartments in the city. Has any of that moved any further forward?
I've heard a little bit about the one down on Autumn. It's at the engineers now, getting all the code prints put on it, and making sure that it meets our current codes. That's the only one I've heard of so far that's moving, actually gonna probably be in front of us before long.
Okay. All right, just wondered, thanks.
There's a lot of growth coming to this city, and that's just one of many.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Utilities.
Just wanted to remind everyone that the next Pink Heels meeting is this Saturday at ten A.M. at the fire station, so anybody's welcome to come, and things are coming right along with that. But other than that, utilities, do you have anything to read?
The only thing I have is the CCR, the Consumer Confidence Report, that DNR requires us to put out, is in the current newsletter. If folks wanna see what's going on with their water, it's a quality product. We haven't had any violations, but it's, there's quite a bit of information there if you choose to, choose to see what's there.
We need some security, Frank.
Ah.
He's Zebra Mayor.
Have a police force at all?
No, not for this. Are you kidding me?
Okay.
I think we need the room cleared.
Hey, fools.
That's great.
Well, there's the one person that's welcome, right?
You guys are a little late. The meeting usually starts at six. I think heaven's waiting.
Does anybody wanna step up the microphone and say, tell us why you're here?
Yes, Bev, please. You'll have to state your name and address.
No, I'm not giving you my address. I'm sorry you know where I live.
That's, that's a prerequisite.
To speak, we all have to know who you are and where you live.
Oh, really?
Yeah, see, I wouldn't fib.
You can lie. Four for twelve, whatever.
Well, I don't live in West Burlington, but, anyway, my name's Bev, and I work with TC. And in case you guys didn't know, she turned sixty a couple months ago.
Holy cow.
And she was too good to come out with us for our celebration, so we thought we'd bring it to her tonight, and April Fool's Day was a really good day for her, so this is payback.
I always have another April Fool's Day coming.
So, anyway, happy sixtieth, and when you're done with your meeting, everyone's invited. I have a table at the Broadway, and we're gonna have food and drinks, so everybody, come over.
Are you paying?
Um, I'll pay for you. You get bread and water.
Well, thanks for coming.
Yeah, really, thanks for coming. I'm assuming we'll all be available on the Pink Heels tour on July sixth, that we're all gonna run. We got our tennis shoes all set and ready to go. Good deal.
Oh, that reminds me, there was one correction I wanted to make that was in the newsletter today. It said that the, our five-k run, it said that we were going to have pink paint. It's pink color. It's a powder that we're having, so nobody's gonna get paint splashed on it, but, but you will turn out pink, but it'll wash off.
I'm not sure that everybody won't get painted. Well, thanks for coming, girls. The Broadway will be anxious to get your money. Oh, and, and sir. I said, you snuck in.
So Therese, do all these people basically work with you? I mean, you know, since we're disrupted now, anyway, what, you know, what the, I mean-
Well, I have, I have three of my bosses. It takes three of them to control me at work.
Three of these people are your bosses?
This young lady is my new boss.
She's not half your age. That's not right.
And I got her for April Fools. And then my second-in-command would be Miss Laura, Mrs. Laura Stoffer back there that's kinda trying to hide. And then my big director, my big cheese, is Cheryl Lambert. But I'm sure next year on Fourth of July, she'll, she'll be part of it. I always plan a year ahead. And then the rest of these compatriots, as I will call them, are people that I work with in Peds and OB as well. We have day people, evening people, and night people. It's good to see your eyes are open.
Who's running the store then?
That's a good question. Obviously, it's not them. And thanks for the balloons, wonderful. I'll fly out of here. All right. Beverly, if you thought you had it bad this year, wait for next.
I think it's pretty cool they got to come on a night when you're being mayor, too. That's kinda, I mean, that's kinda special.
I think Hans had something to do with this, 'cause he told me he'd be bad.
Maybe he purposely missed?
He's not really in Germany, is he?
No. No. You didn't believe that part, did you?
No.
Funny.
But I've got his number. All right, well, thanks for coming, and we're gonna move on.
We're gonna sit here and watch you conduct this meeting, it's just-
Actually, we're televised, TV's probably better.
You can watch it over the Broadway and have a beer.
Well, yeah. Some of them will be south before I get there. All right, we'll move on to sanitation.
I don't have anything, Randy.
The only thing I have is I talked to Kidcut Contractors. They're gonna be here in three weeks to install the air relief valve and do the dirt work at the Westlow Station, so we can close that project out.
Anybody have questions for Randy? All right, well, I'll open the meeting to citizens' inquiries if anybody wants to step forward. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium. We'll go to the public hearing. And this evening, we have a public hearing regarding the proposal to sell the lots, number one through four, in the middle school subdivision. Have we received any written comments?
No.
I hate to ask. Is there anybody that, in the audience, that has any public comments regarding our public hearing?
She does, I think.
She does. Which lot do you wanna buy? 'Cause your mama makes a lot of money now, your grandma. There she goes. All right. Well, if there's no input, council have any comments? No? I'll close the public hearing. We'll go on to new business, and item number one is to consider a resolution setting forth proposal for the city to sell lots one through four in the middle school subdivision.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Questions or comments from council?
Item number seven, which we were talking about before the meeting, and we talked about at the last meeting, that's where it says that construction will start in eighteen months and end in thirty-six months after it starts. I really think the intent of that was to say that within three years, they had to have a house built on there. And so I guess I'd like to see that changed to, to reflect what our real intentions were there, and, and remove some of this mumble-gumble that somebody stuck in there. If you all think that makes sense.
I'm sorry, Rod, I don't, you said number seven?
Number seven underneath.
It's in the, it's on page twenty-nine.
It's in the covenants.
It's in the covenants part, I'm sorry. When it gets down to the real meat of what we're doing and what we're telling them. Number seven reads, "Construction of a dwelling on each lot shall commence within eighteen months following recording of the deed." And then it says, "All lots shall have one home, and in construction of all approved buildings on the property shall be completed in workman-like manner within thirty-six months after the commencement of said construction." Thus, and, and that would give them four and a half years, and our intent was only give them three years total. And I, I think that's what we kinda decided that was a good idea, and I guess that's what I'd like to see it do if, if the rest of you agree.
So, yeah, I, I can't remember what we, eight, we were gonna change eighteen to what?
We're gonna just eliminate the eighteen and don't care when they start construction.
But done-
It's just that they have one done within three years.
I think that's, that makes the most sense. I don't think we necessarily care when they start, as long as we have a deadline finish date.
I think it makes, I think that makes the lots as, as desirable as we can make it to a builder or contractor, that they know they don't have to just build right away, or if somebody needs to sell their house, they know that all this doesn't have to happen within eighteen months or something, so that's my reason.
Well, and I agree, because when we did the metal lots down there, we had construction start within a year, and then I think they had a year and a half to complete after that.
And my real concern there is that, is that, you know, if each individual bought a lot, they might be able to do it within two years, but if a contractor decides to buy one or two of these lots, he's not gonna wanna build two spec homes at a time. He's gonna wanna build one, sell it, then start another one, and I think, I think by leaving that option open, it gives us the best chance to get a higher price out of those lots. That's all.
Do we need to change your motion, then, to be amended, as you said?
Well, before we do that, is there anything else? Everybody look through the rest of it?
Randy, I had one other question from a couple people, and that is sewer and water, does, does it run across all four of those lots, or are they gonna have to run sewer line from somewhere to there?
Water and sewer's in the alley.
Okay.
And there's nothing going to any of the lots right now.
Okay, so everybody will have to run their own from the alley in?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
But it is the whole length of the alley, so nobody's gonna have to run from-
Oh, no. No, everything's in the alley that they need.
Okay. All right.
So then, can we just rephrase that paragraph without too much inconvenience for anybody?
I think that would be a minor change. I think that's the way we intended it, anyway, I just didn't get it in the final resolution.
So then, as Dan asked, Rod, do you wanna amend your motion with the amendment of paragraph seven in the covenants?
Well, we'll just eliminate the first sentence.
Yeah, it's a little more than that, but yeah, basically.
All lots will have one home.
Yeah.
And then they shall be completed within thirty-six months, so let's just-
So then I would remake my motion to approve the restrictive covenants part of this resolution, eliminating most of number seven, and giving the buyers of the lots thirty-six months to complete the building of a home.
You wanna support that amended? Dan?
Did somebody support that?
I'm asking if you want-
Yes.
All right. All right, so I have a motion with a second. Any other questions or comments?
Do we have a sign ready to go up out, over there?
We don't have one ready to go up now.
Are we gonna make the sign?
We'll get one up.
Can you make the sign, Randy?
Not in my department.
Well, I see, I see Kelly or somebody got it in the newsletter, but I just think we need a sign on those lots.
Yeah, I think we were just...
Like in the morning.
We just wanted to wait to make sure that...
We wanted to make sure that we had an approved resolution before we did too much.
I understand.
Yeah, your little drawing in the newsletter, that can be what's on the sign. That's great. That turned out real nice.
All right. Anything else on item number one? If not, roll call.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart, aye, please.
Aye. Item number two is to consider resolution hiring the seasonal help for the Public Works Department.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any questions? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart, aye, please.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Motion approved. Moving on. Consider the hiring swimming pool concession staff for the 2013 pool season. We have a list of names before us.
Motion to approve.
Support, and then I guess I would comment, Dan, you sent a letter out, an email this afternoon that there might be some additions to this?
There's no additions to this.
There is no additions to this. Oh, I must've misread that.
There was some confusion.
Okay.
That I straightened out.
Okay.
Somebody was actually wanting to be a lifeguard rather than a concessionist.
Oh, okay.
And then they got their, somebody got their wires crossed.
So this list is accurate, then?
This is accurate.
All right. I have a motion with a second. Is there any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Stewart, aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number four is to consider payment to Snyder and Associates for engineering services. Yeah, geez, in the amount of $42,160 for the public works facility.
Motion to approve.
Support.
The motion with support. Any questions? Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart, aye.
Motion passed. Item number five is to consider a resolution setting a public hearing to consider the planned specs and form of contract and estimate of cost for the proposed public works facility replacement project. Why bet I can say that fast three times? Looks like we have the public hearing set for May 15th.
Motion to approve.
Support.
The motion with support. Questions?
We're not, we're not approving anything here other than agreeing on a day.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing.
Yeah.
So that helipad that I asked for, we, it's still in the... Checking.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
You have any comments, Dave?
Always. Do you want them?
I...
Sure, step right on up there, Dave.
A little reluctant to ask.
After the helipad.
I have a two-page handout there.
Thank you, sir.
Give you a brief update on, on where the project stands at this point. Project documents are in excess of 95% complete. We have brought, at, at, at staff request, a partial plan set for your review. Presently, it's in the break room area. We'd be willing to review these at your convenience on an individual basis if you wish. Please just let us know through staff if you wish to do that. The project, to reiterate previous discussions, includes generally 20,000 square foot maintenance building, 2,500 square foot salt storage facility, a 1,000 square foot fuel station, a 2,700 square foot cold storage building, materials bunkers, and miscellaneous items. We have to allow some leeway in the, the low bid receive, or low bids received versus the budget. Have included a base bid, which generally is the, the site work, main building, and the salt storage facility. We've placed several of the items as add alternates to be considered after receipt of bids, and for the city to determine which combination, if any, it wishes to, to award. The add alternates at this point are the fuel station, the cold storage building, some of the materials bunkers, and some of the concrete pavement. Our cost estimate has not been revised since December, at which time it was about 3.2 million. We are in the process of updating that, and will provide that updated number before the May 15th meeting. We have established a construction completion date of October 1st of 2014. The, the handout includes an outline of, of dates and items to be addressed to go through the letting process. We're looking at, the next item would be May 8th, issuing a notice to, excuse me, notice of project to prospective contractors, suppliers, and plan rooms. That is page two of the handout. This is the, the basic format we intend to use, the information to be included. You will note that in the preliminary cost estimate, we will have that revised before that is issued. And we'd like to issue that unless you have any objections. That is prior to filing final contract documents. I don't believe there's any liability on the city to proceed if we issue that prior to further council action. That's solely, solely an action of us as the consultant in getting the word out. Normally, we would tend to wait a little bit longer, but we have a somewhat compressed bid period of three weeks from, from the filing of plans to receiving of bids. The purpose of this is to get the information out just a bit quicker, allow contractors and suppliers to start thinking about the project just a little sooner. May 10th, I believe, is when the, the, the notice of hearing and letting will be published. May 15th, we will file the final documents and opinion of cost with, with you, at which time you would hold the public hearing. Three weeks later, on June 5th, receive bids, and then wait two weeks to review, for a review period of the bids and the add alternates to determine which you wish to award. Then on June 19th will be award of the construction contract.
Dave, what would be your guess, then, when dirt would start getting moved?
Potentially August. I think it'll, assuming we award June 19th, depending on the contractor's current workload and plans, they could start as soon as we get contracts signed and we get documents such as insurance and bonds.
Dave, I'm holding you to that. I'm writing it down. What's the construction finish date of the building?
The building only, or the, the overall project?
What's the day Randy moves his equipment out there?
Well, you know, Randy's pretty unpredictable.
What day should Randy move his equipment?
Randy should be able to move in by, by October 1st of next year.
Next year, fall of next year. Okay.
That's, that's a 15-month construction period. We think with a contractor that, that has space on his schedule to begin promptly and, and properly manages his work, would be able to do it in, in less time than that. But we wanna give a little bit of leeway for, for issues such as materials delivery and that type of thing. And it is, it is a relatively, in my mind, extensive project. There are a lot of things to be done. They have to progress, a lot of them have to progress in series, one after the other. They can't all run in parallel, and that, that's gonna take some time.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, and the cost estimate that's supposed to be updated, is that because of material cost changes? Or did we make changes to the building from the original, or...
There, there are some minor changes, but the overall project scope is, is very close to what we've been talking about all along, and certainly since, since we began the, the design development phase six months or so ago. Normally, we will do an update. We would like to think that we've got, well, certainly we've got a better handle on exactly what is or is not included. We should be able to put together perhaps, hopefully, more accurate cost estimates than what this one was. I don't necessarily anticipate it to be higher. But that, that's our purpose, and we need to, we need to have that number to you.
Sounds good.
Good.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Good work.
Steve. Any other question? Roll call.
West.
Uh, what am I voting on?
For the public hearing.
Oh, for the public hearing, yes. Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart, aye, please.
Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to item number six is to consider approving a contract with Levine Sanitation for Garbage Collection Services. Since I didn't help negotiate this, Dan, you wanna discuss it?
Really, the only thing that's changed is the, is the contract price, and it's, it's only up about the same as been going up every, that they've been projecting to go up every year. There's no real substantial changes to the contract that we've had all along. Still two pickups a week from May until whenever, and it's just the price. And the price is also tied to the tipping fees and all of that stuff, just like it has been before.
In your opinion, still a very good deal.
Still a very good deal.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other discussion or comments? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item number seven is consider the first reading of an ordinance establishing the sewer rates for 2013, 2014. The rates went up.
Again, I've put in a 30 cent increase, partially because of all the trouble we're having, and, and we're trying to keep making ends meet. We still can't seem to, to catch up to where we're, where we're, we're, seem to be always spending a little bit more than we're taking in on sewer. Part of it's because of our system, but I'm recommending a 30 cent increase again per thousand gallons.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other questions?
This one sentence scares me in here. I have some concern about the health of the sewer system. Is that anything in particular? Or is that Dan's comment?
Nothing in particular. It's the, the, we had two major things we weren't expecting last year. Is that gonna continue? I don't know. But nothing more than what you already know about.
Better safe than sorry.
They seem to always be pretty expensive when they come.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
So then, when you increase the sewer rates to 30 cents, then is that also going to include where we increase the capital collection fee to $2 rather than $1.50? 'Cause I don't see that listed as a separate motion, or a separate resolution, however you wanna say it.
Yeah, it is. Monthly recharge and then capital.
They say that somewhere. I don't know. Did it not get to the resolution?
It's on the ordinance.
Oh.
It's on the ordinance.
It's on the ordinance, not on the resolution, yeah.
All right.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Yep.
Leslie, do you know right off the top of your head how much we've collected?
We get about $30,000 a year off the capital project at $1.50 per user.
Thirty. And then quickly, 50 cents more will be at $45,000?
It'll be 30 of that, so $10,000.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Stewart, aye, please.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item number eight is consider the first reading of an ordinance establishing water rates for 2013, 2014 to 3%.
Yeah, we had projected 5% in the budget, and Burlington came in and isn't giving us an increase. We calculated the percent of our expenditures that amount to water, and that ended up being 2%. And so we took that 2% off for our increase, and I left that at 3%.
I think they just forgot.
No, they sent us a letter saying they weren't increasing it.
Okay. Holy cow.
Great.
Seems, seems odd, hasn't it?
I think that's like the first time in 14 years.
Yeah, it just seems odd. Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, support, support. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, let's approve it quick.
You don't have any comments, Dan?
Do it before they change their minds.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye. Motion approved. Item number nine is consider the first reading of an ordinance establishing garbage rates for 2013, 2014.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. For those out in the audience and on TV, the garbage increase will 9:45 to 10:05 per month, which is a great rate considering the services we get. Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item number 10 is consider the first reading of an ordinance establishing recycling rates for 2013, 2014.
Motion approved.
And that increases by a dime from 3:15 to 3:25 per month.
Support.
We have a motion with support. Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
Stewart, aye, please.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion approved. All right, now for the fun stuff. Item number 11 is to consider the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 56 of the city code pertaining to vicious domestic animals. Right. This is your baby. I'll let you discuss it.
Well, this is gonna take it out of the political hands and move it into an animal control hearing board. This is something that I've wanted for, since I became chief. You know the past problems we've had, reference vicious animals, and people pushing the limit on that. This will take out of it. It gives straight up to the person who has a dog that has bitten somebody unprovoked. It'll give the, them an animal hearing board chance. Then it'll tell them and instruct them, if they don't agree with that outcome, how they're gonna appeal it in district court. I think it's the ordinance here, I've looked over a lot of ordinances through the past couple of weeks, and I think this will, is best for our community that I have before you. I guess I ask council to look it over and ask them if you have any questions referencing it.
Well, I, I like it a lot, and the conversations we've had prior to the meeting, I, I just don't, I don't think there's anything better out there.
No.
I, I still, and, and it's your department, and you satisfied me today with your comments. I'm reading about that little girl in Prairie City that got bitten, that four-year-old girl. My God, how, that little girl that was here, killed by a pit bull. And I still want us to think about if we need to be banning certain breeds down the road. I, I know not, not, but not right now. This is what we need to do right now.
Correct. I think it, it boils down to, a lot of people have specific breeds. And I think it comes down to the animal owner more than the animal.
Absolutely true, and just a little bit of research that I've done on the internet, there's a lot more pro-animal stuff on the internet. But there are some veterinarian websites that do point to specific breeds as vicious biters. And they seem to be the same kind of dogs, and they're related to the pit bull.
And then, but you're also giving into the legal court system that says beyond a reasonable doubt, and I don't...
Yeah.
And I don't think it's up to us to do DNA to prove that this breed is a pure pit bull.
I just don't want you to forget about thinking about it.
This is the easiest way to, yeah, this is the easiest way to check the dog's disposition. If the dog ends up doing one bite, then it's quarantined for 10 days. At that time, the pound will observe it. In past cases, the ones that we have had vicious, when they were in the pound, they were vicious in the pound also, so that observation helped out. And this, this will all be brought into that and into an investigation portion. And then the animal control board pretty much has an outline. If it fits that, then the dog will be euthanized, or they'll have to appeal it to district court, not to associate court like it's done in the past.
There's, there's a line you cross in there where you go from being reactive, meaning somebody got bit, to proactive. And I'm not sure where that line is, and I'm not sure if we want to cross it. I don't think we want to give out permits, yes, you can have a dog, but you can't.
Correct.
But I think you can talk about which kind of dogs we want in our town. Future.
No problem.
Future. But this is very good. Very, good work.
Thank you.
Frank, is this the same type of a board that Burlington has?
It'd be the same type of board. I also looked at a lot of others. There was, there was one that I particularly liked that came from Urbandale. And they, there's, that's the way a lot of law enforcement's going, is to an animal control board. Urbandale used both the council for dangerous animals, which there is a difference between dangerous and vicious. Use the council for any dangerous animals, and then use the animal control board for domestic animal that had turned vicious. They also had a way to keep a vicious dog, but it'd be very expensive for a homeowner to go to that expense with insurance that's required, the kennel that's required. And it was pretty complicated, probably twice as big as this. That I, I like quite a well. This is probably best for our community. It's pretty much fourth straight. Somebody that owns a dog knows that they have to be responsible for that dog and the consequences if they're not.
And one last question. Have you talked at all to the Humane Society, whoever those people are, and veterinaries about the possibility that I'm serving on this board helping us out?
I already have somebody from the Humane Society. I have three citizens, and I'm going to, if this is passed, approach a couple of veterinarians.
Wonderful. Good.
In your ordinance, somewhere along the way, should we start licensing dogs again in the city of West Burlington? We haven't licensed dogs for 15, 20 years.
I don't think so. What I think we should probably do more of is when we have dog at large, we always try to find the owner. And sometimes we look the other way. If rabies, we don't check to see if rabies vaccinations are up to date. I don't, can't remember the last time we cited for a homeowner not keeping the rabies. And I think that's probably something I'm going to cover with my officers. Now, if we take in a stray or a dog that has gotten off, and the vaccine, vaccination isn't up to that, the pound will charge them an extra fee and give them a voucher to go to it. But I think we probably need to start monitoring that more and start citing into court under that code of our city code about the rabies vaccination.
And then I'll just add my 3 cents, because I'm pricey. I agree with you, Frank, because I don't think we should set up an ordinance that, that addresses certain breeds of dogs. Because 10 years ago, it was Doberman Pinschers, and German Shepherds, and Mastiffs, and other unreal dogs. And I, I don't think that you can blame the breed for the dog. If the dog is vicious, it's due to the handling from the owner.
Correct. I agree with you on that.
Because my son's pit bull, he's a wuss. He's a pit bull, he don't know it. He don't know it. Because he's a, he cows down to my three little Scottish terriers. It's just unreal. He shakes his legs watching them. So I, you know, I just, I just can't grasp my hands around that. And I, and I'm glad that we just made it to the animal itself rather than the breed.
Yeah, and I've seen some Chihuahuas that are pretty mean, too, but they just don't have a big bite.
Well, I found out how vicious my Maggie Mae was, because she brought a rabbit. Well, it was live, but not anymore. Like, oh, yuck. But that's, that's just my, my take on it.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments for the chapter 56? If not, then I'll entertain a roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion approved. We have item number 12 that consider resolution waiving the second and third reading of the ordinance amending chapter 56 of the city code, the ordinance that we just talked about.
Support.
We have a motion with support. Any questions or comments?
Typically, we wouldn't do this, so I guess I'm wondering why. Typically, we would do this and give the public a chance to comment on this in case they wanted to. So I guess I'm wondering why we have to do away with the second reading at least.
You don't have to. We just put it in there in case you wanted to get it in fast.
I mean, does it affect this, does it really affect this current animal we're dealing with?
No.
No.
No, correct. It does not. But it could, it could affect something that, because one was, we took an animal bite report on Friday of one. At, at first, it appeared that it was unprovoked, but after further investigations, there's a possibility it was provoked. So that would not go to the animal. But if something else happens, that would delay, and it might be back to you again, to the council.
I mean, if you have some reason we need to do this, it's, I can accept it. But if we don't have a reason, I guess I hate breaching how we normally would do things and at least give everything two readings unless there's some...
I would, I would just comment on that, Brad. Because of the Yukon thing, the, the citizens have been shown that we have a loophole. And if they wanted to pursue it the same way the Yukon thing was pursued, they could do it, then I don't want to give them the chance. It's that time of year that the people are walking, the kids are playing, the dogs are out, and...
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's going to happen anyway, because it's the right thing, and it's just, let's just get it out.
Yeah, it's all right. It's just one of them technical things.
Have a second reading and waive the third at the next meeting, too.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. That's only, you're only talking two weeks.
Typically, that's what we do.
Let's do that.
Typically, we waive the third one, and we, and we give the citizens at least a chance to comment on it before we present it and totally okay it all in one meeting. I, I'm just uncomfortable doing that a little bit.
I, I, and I can live with that.
That's fine. We can do that.
Waive the, waive the third.
Has it been posted on the website?
Yes, it was posted with the agenda, but it's not in the ordinance. The or, other ordinance is still intact. I don't know. We could have Brad put something up there. But I, just, today I referred to the council agenda for somebody that inquired about it and told him that just check the May 1st council agenda, and the code would be in there.
The Des Moines County News gave this, wrote very good information about this in the last, her last edition. So let's give her a chance to explain this again, and a lot of people read that.
Okay.
That's probably a good idea.
All right, so we're going to have to take a vote, and everybody will have to vote nay. Roll call.
Lees.
Nay.
West.
Nay.
Crowner.
Nay.
Stewart.
Nay.
Motion failed. Item number three is to consider the first reading of an ordinance adding a new chapter to the city code to establish and regulate an animal hearing board.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other comments? Roll call.
West.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Lees.
Aye. Motion approved. And then item number 14 is to consider resolution waiving the second and third reading of an ordinance adding the new chapter to the city code to establish and regulate an animal hearing board.
So we could just let that die for the lack of a second?
No one makes a motion, it dies.
It goes away. Okay.
All right. Failed. Moving on to old business. Anybody have anything?
Just you.
And to my fellow older, older-than-I councilperson.
Oh. And not tonight, I'm not.
Right back at you.
Yes. All right, constantly leave anything for inquiries, any citizens' inquiries while we're all still here having fun. I don't see anybody rising to the podium. I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're done.
Thank you. Good job.